Board members, you would have received the copy of the minutes from our last meeting. I need to, a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make that motion.
A second. Mr. Frazier.
Mr. Isgro?
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Can someone take care of the sound so we don't echo? All right, thank you. At this time, we have room on our agenda for someone from City Council. Does anyone have any comments from City Council? Okay. We have updates. Ms. Harbrook?
Thank you, President Sprague. Tonight, we have two presentations from our two different elementaries. And the first elementary, I've got Josh Martram here from Riverview. And Josh, I'm gonna have you come to the podium and take over.
All right, there it is. All right. So first of all, I just want to thank you guys for inviting us to highlight some good stuff going on over at Riverview. Today, what we're gonna be talking about is, uh, let me go back. Today, what we're gonna be talking about is some of the partnerships that we've been able to create over the years at Riverview Elementary. In particular, we're gonna talk about how these partnerships-
Partnerships have been able to further engage our families, further engage our students, and even further engage our staff. And I'd like to introduce to you as well my assistant principal, Anne Marie Barth.
Hi, everybody.
All right, so last time we presented, it's been a couple of years, but last time I presented to you guys about Riverview, we started off with a question, so we are gonna make you guys answer a question again, I'm sorry. So the question is, I want you to think of a time when you were part of an effective team. What made you feel like a valued member of this team? And I'm gonna direct this to our board members. So let's start with Pastor Shaq. What made you feel like you were a valued member of a team when you were on an effective team? Mr. Sprague?
We're all working on the same, in the same direction.
Very good. Ms. Baker?
That they kept me included in the conversation and listened to what I had to say.
Excellent. Mr. Isgro?
Everyone's sharing ideas, and they're going in the same direction.
Awesome. You guys led us perfectly right into the next sled.
Pull this down a bit. This is my life being short. Got it. Okay. So, yes, you led us perfectly there. When we thought about what makes an effective culture, we thought about a few things, and you guys hit, hit the nail right on the head. In order to have an effective culture, we realized that there is an importance for the sense of belonging. So I make a difference, right? I'm part of this community, I'm part of this group, I have a say, and it's respected. So that sense of belonging is really important. We also realize that, we realize that especially with our families, we want them to feel like they're part of our school family, our school community, it's not just students and staff. And obviously with our partnerships as well. The next thing we talked about was collective efficacy. So somebody mentioned, we're all working from the same direction. We want to make sure that our beliefs are shared beliefs, and that they're common among all students, staff, and families. Mrs. Blevins, in our admin retreat in Indy, I still have this clear graphic in my head. It was literally just a bunch of arrows, but they're all pointing the same direction. So let's get our, our ideas, our beliefs, and put them all together. And together, obviously, we are stronger than by ourselves. And the last thing, which we're gonna talk about tonight, are obviously our resources. So we can't do this alone. We need our partnerships, we need our community organizations, we need our parents and our families to help us optimize our students' learning, learning potentials. So we're gonna go on, and now we're gonna talk about some of our partnerships. So Ebony Brock, if you could just stand quickly, is she here? Ebony? I thought she was. Okay. So Ebony is from Booker T. Washington, and Booker T. Washington's one of our after-school partners. They work with our kiddos on homework help and other after, after-school activities, including our sports. Living Waters and Boys and Girls Club, they weren't able to attend this evening, but they both also help, excuse me, after-school with homework help, after-school activities. And Living Waters has been a crucial partnership with us in engaging our Hispanic community, and making sure that they feel that they have a voice as well. Boys and Girls Club, I'm sorry, I already talked about them. Big Brothers and Big Sisters, we have Stephanie Ip. Hi, Stephanie. There she is. Thanks for coming tonight. We all, a lot of us know about Big Brothers, Big Sisters. I believe our mayor actually was a big brother for a while, and we are appreciative for their community mentorships. The next thing we're gonna talk about in our community is our universities. We are so lucky to have Miami University so close. We have Brian Schultz. Brian, if you could give a wave. We appreciate Brian for coming to represent Miami tonight. They are, they have been integral in our teacher recruitment. We have, we actually did a field study, a field student pilot last year at Riverview, where all grades K through five had a field student in them. The following year, a lot of those field students were able to come back and student teach in our classrooms. So that has been a great resource for us. It's also obviously great for our teachers and our staff to get continuing ed and advancing degrees. They also allowed us to come to their retreat, or their Markham Conference Center for our retreat last year. I believe there was like some sort of a snow day, and it got canceled, and then they worked back with us again to make sure we could get that done. So we're very thankful to Miami University, and Brian especially. GCU, Jamel Taylor. Jamel, if you could give us a wave. Jamel brings breakfast, lunch, dinner. So do many of the others. But you know, whenever you see Jamel, you know there's gonna be a meal included as well, so that's been great. Same thing, it's really great for our teachers to be able to do online advanced degree options, even just courses for their credits to renew their licenses. They also provide professional developments, and then again, they celebrate our staff.
I also like that Jamel likes all my music. That makes me invited more. So one of the pillars of our community is our churches as well, so we would be remiss to not mention some of the churches that have helped us over the years. One of our biggest partners has been Inspiring Hope Church, and I have Pastor Ben Mangrum here, if he could wave. And one of the events we got to do with them this year, which was amazing, it was a huge turnout. Honestly, one of the best events I've seen at a school. We had our Fall Fest, and they provided, and their team did everything to set up that Fall Fest. We had over 400 families show up to that, so it was a huge success. I also want to shout out Hamilton First Baptist Church, and I actually have some familiar faces that are representative of that church. So Mr. Sprague, Ms. Baker, if you guys could wave, I'm sure nobody knows you in here. And one of the events we got to do with them pre-COVID was, we got to do a big Easter egg hunt with a lot of our students in the back of Riverview Elementary. We honestly had a lot of kids from the community, not just Riverview kids, so it was a huge event. You can see there in the picture at the bottom left, there's Mr. Sprague in civilian casual. And then, they weren't able to make it tonight, but I also wanted to shout out Lindenwall Methodist Church, 'cause they do a lot for our school as well. So this last slide, I'm just gonna tell you, there's a lot of people here. So this last slide is our businesses and organizations. Great thing about this community is our businesses and organizations are more than willing to help out our schools. And I have quite a few partners here today that gave up their time to come here, so we wanted to shout them out. So Keller Williams has worked with Riverview, actually, since my first year as principal, they started partnering with me, and they've worked with us ever since. Here from Keller Williams, I have Vanna Williams and Lauren Teese in the back, right back there. And they've done quite a few things with our school that would take me forever to mention, so I'm just gonna mention one. There in the bottom-left picture, you can see I'm very excited. I got to live out one of my childhood dreams from Happy Gilmore and carry one of the big checks. So they've donated quite a bit to our school, and that was on Red Day, where they give up an entire day and go serve the community. Their whole organization shuts down, and they just go serve their community, and they choose to spend that at Riverview, so we're very appreciative. Another person I wanted to shout out today from the founder of Matandi Steel is Frank Fearman. Where's Frank at? Frank's right there. And a couple of things I wanted to shout him out for. One, for helping me pay my way through college, 'cause I worked for Matandi. Frank hired me when I was going through college, so I'm very, very appreciative for that. But he has not stopped helping since then. He's been very generous with donations to our building. Matandi still, to this day, works with Riverview, and it's great, 'cause they're right down the road. Actually, on our title slide today, that truck that the kids were sitting on was a Matandi truck, so we're very thankful. Another person I wanted to shout out, Mark Willis there in the back corner, from Willis Murphy Advantage Insurance. He does quite a few things for our staff. He brings stuff for our staff. I know they're very appreciative for that. Anytime they get fed, they're happy, so we wanted to make sure to shout out Mark as well. And then they couldn't be here today, but a huge event was put on earlier this year at Riverview with Shoes for the Shoeless. It was actually the furthest south that that organization has ever came to a school. And there in the top-right picture, that is all the volunteers from Hamilton that came out to help us out, which is crazy. That's a big number. So we're very thankful to them. A lot of you people in here probably know these two people, but here representative from Seventeen Strong, we have Kathy Clink and Peggy Bangy back there. And they've done quite a few things for our building, and for all of our schools, really. But one of the coolest things we're doing right now, and you can see it there in the top-left picture, is a group of students is doing a community project through their Nano Grant program, and they're creating picnic tables that they wanted to put at Jefferson Park. And actually, those picnic tables are being made by our high school carpentry class, so it's even a partnership between our two schools. And we're hoping to unveil those in the spring this year, so we're very thankful for them helping us out. And then the last two I'm gonna mention together, because it's to do with that last picture there at the bottom-right. Probably one of the coolest things I've gotten to do in my career so far, last Christmas, if you missed this, Dick's Sporting Goods, and Wendy Strine is here from Dick's Sporting Goods. She's in a Dick's shirt, so you can probably figure that out. So Dick's Sporting Goods and Bridgewater partnered with the Anthony Munoz Foundation, and there in the bottom-right, they allowed our kids, they opened up their store just to us, and they allowed our kids to go shopping for themselves and for their whole families at Christmas. And Mr. Munoz and their foundation paid for that, but Dick's was generous enough to even knock percentages of off of everything in the store, and then afterwards donated to our school. So we're very thankful to both those organizations as well. So, this brings me back to our original question. So the question I asked you, there's a purpose there, obviously, and you guys kinda hit the nail right on the head. That original question, how did you feel valued and part of a team? And it takes a lot of people to make, make our team be as valuable and as effective as it can possibly be. And you can see all the people in this room, I'm very thankful that they were willing to give up their time to come support us tonight. And we do have something small for you guys before you leave, as a token of gratitude. But circling back around to that question, it takes all these people in this community in order to make these schools as effective as they can possibly be. We're very thankful to all these people that give up their time and energy and efforts, and even their dollars, to help our students, our families, and our staff. So thank you. We appreciate the time today, and if you have any questions.
Josh, first of all, I'm gonna thank all the people out here that help support your school, and our schools in Hamilton. I don't know what kind of a salesman you are, but I think it's pretty clear. Okay, you've done an excellent-
I'll send to that.
Yeah, no, there are some things you don't want to tell me. But this is exciting, that you can reach out and get people to help out, make this a community. And, and I realize this, sitting today, thinking, you as a principal, Kathy Wagenfield as a principal, and Aaron Hopkins as a principal, all three of you had assistant principals who became principals in another school. So you must be doing something, you're teaching them. So, but you do a great job down there at Riverview, and it's impressive, and this is impressive, how people have come to create this community. I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Josh, I just want to say, thank you. I see a lot of people out there that are friends of mine from, from my past years, and thank you to all of you for working with our schools, and it's just incredible. And thank you for what you do at Riverview as well, you and your staff.
Thank you.
Josh, I don't know who you had as an elementary principal, but he must have been fantastic to get you into this. What? I'm just-
Oh, he was new.
No, I just want to say-
He was okay.
He was okay. He was okay. He was just okay. We'll talk later. Anyway. Anyway, but again, thank you to all of you that are here today. This is, seeing this type of support from our community for a school in our, for one of our schools is just incredible, to see the support. I, I was writing here, before it went up on the screen, the village to raise a child, and that is so important in what we're trying to do here. We cannot work it in a vacuum. We can't provide all the resources all these kids need. You fill that gap. And that's probably the most, probably the better word, is filling that gap of what these kids need. The other thing I wanted to say is, by doing this, you show these students a world that they have never, would have never experienced. A world that just widens everything that they do, gives them opportunities that they never would have had. So thank you so much for doing, thank you for your job that you're doing over there. Appreciate it very much.
Absolutely. I think it's really great, because the fact that, yeah, it allows these kids to see people love them beyond just education, but these are things that they will never forget, like being able to go to buy gifts and stuff for their parents and their families, as well as those fall festivals. Those things, kids, they never forget those experiences, and then hopefully, they come back and do the same thing, and they give back, so. And they see the, and then I love it, the fact that these are people that they see in their community every day. So they're liable to see them in the grocery store, they see them in their community, working, and these are businesses that they pass every day, that they know that have contributed to them and their lives to make it better, so. I love it. Love it.
One of the questions that I always get is, why Hamilton? This is why Hamilton. Look at the support in this room tonight for one elementary school. We have support throughout all of our buildings like this. This community wants us to be successful, and we will be successful because of all of you. Because, Josh, of your leadership, because Anne Marie, of your leadership. We've got great people in this community, within our schools and outside of our schools. And we sit up here and we talk a lot about academics, and all of that's extremely important. But experiences are also important, and all of us, at some point in our lives, have needed a helping hand, and needed someone to assist us. And whomever that is, we all need that. And tonight, we have a room full of people that have impacted students and impacted families. And I can't even begin to thank each and every one of you enough for everything you do for our students every single day. And, and many of those things are subtle little things that you have no idea how big of a difference that makes on a daily basis, so. Thank you, Josh. I really appreciate your work in engaging the entire Riverview community in the education of our students. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Our next presentation tonight is from Fairwood Elementary, and here is, to present is Jen Wolf and Adrian Scherzer.
First of all, I want to say thank you for having us. I'm Jennifer Wolf, principal at Fairwood Elementary. A lot of great things are going on at Fairwood. It was hard to choose which one to present, but in choosing this, I've brought a whole team here who is actually gonna present to you. This is our kindergarten team, because they are the team that brought this idea to me, which was amazing. It's called the Kindergarten Kickstart. I'm gonna introduce them and let them talk to you about what the kindergarten kickstart is, how it started, and where we've come since we did it. So come on up, you guys. We have Karen Boltman, Brandy Talby, Lisa Lehr, Lily Martinez, and Elspeth Cunningham. So I'm gonna turn it over to them.
Thank you. We're gonna share the mic a little bit, so hopefully we'll be able to move around. But I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about the kickstart. Every day, we come in and we're trying to make sure that we make learning for life, and we make it positive for our kindergarteners. And so one of the things that kinda led us to this is, in kindergarten, we don't always get to know our students. Some of our students go through our preschool program here in Hamilton, and so we know, you know, what we're expecting, and we can talk to those preschool teachers. But kindergarten's one of those unique grade levels, where it's like a box of chocolates. And so you don't always get to make sure that the students are put into classrooms, or in groups, or with teachers, that are going to make sure that we can have that positive learning environment every single day. And so, over the course of the last year, I was in kindergarten for the first 10 years of my career, took a break, went to second and third grade, and then came back to kindergarten. And I guess, just kept thinking, like, how can we make this more positive for kindergarten? And one of my best professional developments is through my social media kindergarten accounts. I'm listening and talking to people all over the country, all over the world, about five- and six-year-olds. And one of the things that was the buzzword is this kindergarten camp, or this switcheroo, and I was like, whoa, what is that? So one day, when there was the buzz that comes up every spring about, you know, staffing, and I, you know, everybody kinda gets nervous, because you're like, oh my gosh, I don't want to move, or, you know, I do want to move, or whatever. And so I thought, I need, I had this idea, I hadn't even ran it by my team yet, and I followed Jen to the car. 'Cause she was coming here for a meeting, and I'm like, Jen, I have this idea, I, you know, like, think it would be great, and she's like, "Oh, I love it. Let's talk more about it." So it was like the first time I'd ever followed my principal to the car, and I think it worked out well. So that's the why. Like, we want to make sure that we have balanced kindergarten classrooms, so we can be successful in kindergarten. So, out of all those social media accounts, I found some articles, and I found Falls Med Elementary. I sent them an email, and I said, "Hey, you guys do this switcheroo, can we find out more about it?" So we set up a Zoom meeting with them. One morning, we zoomed with them, they shared all of their documents with us. They've been doing this since 2015, so they've been doing it a long time, they were. And so we were able to, like, learn about it. And after we learned about it, then we started planning, and we made it our own. And we, the switcheroo was cute, but we liked kickstart, so that's how we got to the kickstart. I'll pass it on to Brandy now.
All right. So what is kickstart? Kickstart is a program that takes place the first week of school. The teachers really wanted to utilize that soft start that we have, where we have two days of our first group of kids, and then the second half comes on, the second two days, and then on Friday, we have everybody. So, had taken the opportunity to just have half the students at the, at a time, we were able to think about putting them in, in a, a place where they can see each teacher, and we could take that opportunity to get to know them better, and to assess them, and determine their needs. And then, on the Thursday of that first week of school, we took all of the knowledge that we gained for each student, and we joined together, along with our kindergarten support team and our awesome administrators, and we grouped together to form balanced classrooms. We looked at their academic needs, their social-emotional needs. We looked at whether they have an IEP, or if they're English language learners, or, we even tried to balance out girls and boys. So we wanted to find, our, our real goal was to find the best classroom, the best grouping for each student. And then after we determined our permanent classrooms, then we invited the families back in, and we had a big kickstart finale.
How did we do this? We used our Title I grant money to pay our teams for out-of-contact time. We provided our students with these awesome kickstart bags, and inside these kickstart bags, there are a bunch of tools. They have magnetic letters, whiteboards, decodable books, dry erase boards, what else is in there? T-shirts, markers, anything that they need at home to be successful and help support our learning from school is in this bag. And we also provided our families for a kickstart finale. We'll talk more about that in a minute. A lot of planning went in to kickstart. We started from, we did meet with Falls Med, Falls Mead, but we really were starting from ground zero. And we took a lot of, lot of time to make sure we were gonna run this successfully and effectively. During the time, over the course of three days over the summer, we met and created lesson plans. We created parent information letters to parents, explain what we were doing and why we were doing this for their child. We organized our welcome bags right here. We planned screeners and observation checklists, so we know what we need from our students, and what we're looking for when we, when we divide up our students. We prepared our student materials, and we planned for open- We prepared our student materials and we planned for open house and kickstart.
So, after we did all of this planning, when the school year started, it was time to implement our vision. We started by using our open house as a time to meet with the parents and inform them about the whole kindergarten kickstart process and then, and why we were doing it. The parents also had the opportunity to visit all the kindergarten classrooms. And they also got to go in the pod and see a video from our principal. Scheduling was very important. Keeping our schedule going, having all of our lessons at the same time and then also our transitions scheduled was crucial to making each day of the week during our kindergarten kickstart successful. Each student was assigned to a home base and the home bases rotated to each classroom throughout the week. Spending about a half a day in each room because we have four class, kindergarten classrooms in our building. Lessons included some of the basic kindergarten skills that we were looking for, observing and assessing, like cutting, writing their names, sorting, using their math manipulatives. And then those important things like learning how to follow directions and learning our school rules and procedures and basically learning how to do school. We, again, we use that soft start, having half the kids at a time, to be able to meet with each student and assess them on their kindergarten skills. We observe them and assess them during our kindergarten classroom time. So, what did the kindergarten kickstart week actually look like? Each kindergartner started their day in the cafeteria. They came in, had breakfast there. We thought it was a good meeting place where the support staff who, and teachers who were bringing them in for the first time, you know, the wide-eyed little five-year-olds not knowing where they're going. We could all just put them all in the cafeteria and then we, as the teachers, divided them up and to make sure they got into the correct classroom, their correct home base. They would eat breakfast there each morning and then after announcements and attendance, we would head back down to the kindergarten classrooms and they would start their day in their home base. They had a place in that room for their belongings, in their cubbies, and then they would come back at the end of the day. So, they had a place where they felt like, where they, where they felt secure. Each group was able to meet with every classroom over two days. So, we had, say, Monday, Tuesday, our first group. They started their day in their home base and then in the afternoon, went to a second kindergarten classroom. Then the second day, they would, they came in, went to their home base, and then went to the third classroom. In the afternoon, they went to the fourth classroom. And then each day, back to their home base for dismissal because we know that getting kindergarteners to the right place at the end of the day is really important. So, having that consistency was important to us. Having half the students at a time really allowed the teachers to build, start to build that rapport with all of the students. And it allowed us to document their academic and behavior needs. And we each had one of these for each home base. This was a assessment binder and we used this. It traveled with the students. So, we would hand it off to the next teacher when we switched students. And we would also put, like, their materials in there along with their assessments. And then we used this as we were forming our classrooms on that Thursday of our kickstart week.
On that first Thursday, we had our placement day. Our team, which consisted of the classroom teachers, our administration, our ESL staff, speech and occupational therapists and intervention specialists, all stayed after school to look at the data we collected throughout the first week. We used the assessment binders to look at all the different things that we saw from each kid. And then we were able to take into account IEPs, English language learners, any behaviors or any other specific needs that each student had when we were placing them into their classes. We were able to put them in a class that we thought would best support their needs. And then the next day, we had, we called it our rough placement day. It was basically just like a trial run and it was, like I said, a rough placement. So, if we needed to move anybody around to make sure that we were better, best fitting their needs, we were able to. At the end of that day, we sent home letters to all the parents saying, this is your child's permanent teacher for the year. And we also made a phone call to every single parent of every single student, letting them know that, hey, I am your child's permanent teacher this year. I'm so happy to have him in our class.
This being a different setup than what we're used to and what our parents are used to, we knew that communication was going to be key. We needed to communicate the same information from all different teachers to all of our families so they knew what was going on each day. These are some examples of the things that we sent home. For example, the welcome letter that was mailed home, class dojo messages, on stories, final forms, emails, different flyers. We'll show you a sample of one. Letters and that phone call home on that Thursday was very important. And we, of course, made sure that all of this was going home in English and Spanish since we do have a lot of Hispanic families in our building. And this is one of the sample letters that we sent home for our parents so they knew what was coming, that it was going to be a change that we, but we were going to be right there with them to kind of walk them through that process. Because it can be scary for them since it's their five-year-old many times going for the first time to school. But it went, it went well.
Great. So, I'll talk a little bit about our kickstart finale, which happened the Tuesday after the first week of school. We basically just held a second open house for all of our kindergarten families to come and meet their student's permanent teacher for the year. We were able to give a little bit more specific information about our classroom, our classrooms, whatever assessments that we would be doing throughout the year, as well as the curriculum that we would be using throughout this year. We were fortunate enough to be able to provide dinner for every single family too that attended from Richard's Pizza. We were also fortunate enough to have a generous donation of juice from McDonald's so that everybody was able to have juice. As we mentioned before, every student received a Fairwood Falcon backpack, as well as a Fairwood shirt to show off their school pride and to, again, use those resources that we sent home to continue learning at home. We also were fortunate enough to have some bikes that we could raffle off to students that attended. And let me tell you, those kids loved it.
After all of that work that went into this week, we are seeing the success of all of the work we did prior. And these are some of the things that we are seeing now that have really worked well and that helped kind of give the students what they needed to be successful. For example, the one on the top left, the interventions. We were able to finish all the screeners. Occupational therapist got started right away with students, as well as speech therapist and myself with ESL students, giving them what they need to be successful in the classroom.
Another thing that has, we've noticed that was successful right from the start was since we knew all of the students, every kindergarten teacher knew every student, that we could immediately start collaborating and planning as a team. This went into our TBTs and also our intervention plans.
As I mentioned before, we were able to send home a backpack filled with resources for every single student, as well as a Fairwood t-shirt, which was just a really nice way to welcome our new Fairwood Falcon families into the community. And our students now wear their Falcon shirts with pride. And I'm sure they will continue throughout the year. And again, those families now have those resources at home that they continue, they can continue working on what we're working on at school with their students to support their growth.
And so, another success is our classroom instruction. So, the second week when we had our permanent classrooms, we already all knew the students. And so, we were able to go ahead and start working from that, from day one, that Monday. And being able to form groups, we were able to move into our small groups very quickly because we already had all the, all the grunt work done at the beginning to find out where their levels were. And so, we continue to see that instruction right now. And it's just to, to go back to our TBT and our intervention, we'll be touching base next week on our intervention plans. And one of the things with that instruction, I'm able to say, you know, this certain student, and everybody knows that person's face. So, it's not even like we have to, like, think about, oh, which one is that? We all know who they are.
So lucky to provide our students with those kickstart, like, kickstart backpacks and all the tools. So, what we did is create a website. Are you just presenting to the tab? Ask anymore? Sorry.
We had to do it the old way, so.
Oh, one of five. There we go.
But I need to do all. That's what I forgot.
There we go. All right. So, we decided to come up with a website and we provided videos for parents on how to use the tools that were in the backpack. So, if you scroll down, we created this slideshow on fun ways for them to practice their letters and stamps and numbers at home. And then we made sure to have everything in English and Spanish for the families and our decodable books. We actually, it's not working. These are YouTube videos that we created as a team to help support their, their learning at home. Symmetric letters and whiteboard activities and notebook activities and our manipulatives.
The pamphlet that Ms. Blevins, Mrs. Blevins gave you is a pamphlet that has a QR code so the parents could just scan that on their phone or whatever device they could use and it'll take them right to this website. And then they're able to get some ideas on how to use all of the manipulatives and things that are in their welcome bags. Oops, now I got to go back. Yep, not your problem. Not your fault. There we go. All right, perfect. And we think this slide pretty much sums up the week and sums up kindergarten. Our students wear their shirts with pride and Jen and I have talked about this a couple of times. Having that pride in your school, it carries along, like, a long ways, way past academics. And, you know, like, we talk about how we're here for the student's life. And just today, my student teacher was teaching calendar time and they were going over, well, what will tomorrow be? And they're, they're like, Friday. And they're like, we get to wear our Falcon shirts tomorrow. So, they were so excited. And I know that we hear that all the time. And just recently on Halloween, Halloween in kindergarten is a lot of fun. So, we decided to bring back that kickstart where we were transferring the kids and we moved our classrooms. And we were able to see and actually work with the kids on an activity during, for fall, like, with a fall theme. And the kids were so excited. They're like, oh, we're going to that room again? Oh, yay. So, they were just excited and they could remember that. And to see our kindergarteners take pride in that was just, was just really cool. And I know that we've reflected on that a couple of times throughout the year about how important this is. So, we appreciate all of your support and allowing us to use the funding to be able to do this. And thank you.
I just have to comment that this is really the, my favorite part of the meeting is when we get to hear all the creativity that's going on out there and to the community out there watching. I continue to be so impressed with our teachers and what they're doing with our kids. It's just they, they care. They, it's just, it's heartwarming and it makes me so proud to be part, just be part of Hamilton.
So, one, thank you. But, so, if I'm understanding correctly, you done this over the summer, over your summer break?
Yeah, we had three days during the summer that we came in for about four or five hours to do the planning. And we, we used the information that we got from Falls Med and they kind of, and then we made it our own. We are fortunate here in Hamilton that we were able to have the soft start. So, having half of our students for two days and the other half for the other two days is not something that Falls Med had.
Right.
So, we made it, I feel like that was very helpful because we had those smaller settings and we were able to get to know our students. But yes, we came in over the summer and worked together in the pod. And we, it was, it was really cool because everybody put their ideas out. We had all the computers going. And then we kind of dispersed, got things together. And we, we literally had every single plan. So, we did Pete the Cat. Everybody was doing Pete the Cat in the classroom. We did the M&amp;M's counting book. And so, everybody was doing that. So, we had all of those things ready and prepared. So, it was a very, it went very smoothly our first week because we were able to take in those times for planning.
Nice. Thank you so much for going above and beyond for the students to make sure that they were prepared and have what they need. So, that's just amazing. That's just amazing, that, that piece of going above and beyond to get something like this together from the backpacks to family nights, making sure that the kids had what they need when they get home to continue what you guys were already doing in the classroom. So, hats off to you guys, if I had one on, and everyone up here. So, we, we appreciate that. That's amazing. It's going to, again, set them up for success as they continue on their education. So, thank you.
I'd have to agree. Thank you very much for the hard work you guys put. I'm just sitting here going, wow, wow. Time and again, you guys, I know how hard it is in kindergarten especially. You don't know what you're getting through those doors. And it's, it's sort of a jungle the first few weeks of, of school. Seriously, I, I, I understand that. But putting the kids' needs first, you, you spent a lot of your own time working through this problem, finding where kids, what's the best learning opportunity? What's the best environment for them and putting the kids first? That's what it's all about. And we, I, I salute you for that. That's, that's a hard thing to do and I thank you for the, the hard work. Jen, you better hang on to them because Josh, Josh is over there salivating. So, yeah. But thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Sprague, I actually had the, the fortune of being at Fairwood the very first day when all those kindergartners were coming in and we were walking them to the cafeteria. And Jen was telling me kind of what the plan was at that time, which she had shared with me in the spring earlier. And at that time, I thought maybe they were a little crazy for, for coming up with this idea. But one of the things that I think is very important here is education sometimes gets criticized for being static. And the creativity and the thought of coming up with this plan, it's very intentional about placing students in the position to be the most successful throughout the year. So, I think it was great forethought to, to, to go out and look for something that was different. And I think what you're going to see happen, based on what I'm hearing with this, is you're going to probably see this become a, a practice across the district that many of our schools are probably going to jump onto. So, thank you for having a creative thought to go about this, for seeing the plan, for working the plan and for putting it into place.
I also want to say, I want to thank, Andrea, you brought it to us first few weeks ago, didn't you? And I thank you for, for filling in the gaps because we had heard about this and now seeing exactly how it, how it all came about. That's wonderful. That's wonderful. I was going to ask, on your, you had a day where you sort of recalibrated? Did you move many kids around?
So, on our place, on our rough placement day, we actually didn't. We were pretty right on, right on, which we were kind of all surprised because when you have part of the group on Monday and Tuesday and you have part of the group on Wednesday, Thursday, you have to make sure that the personalities and there's not any red flags. And I feel like we did a, I feel like, I'm going to pat ourselves on the back. We did a really good job with it.
They're all nodding.
You deserve to pat yourselves on the back because, and I think Mr. Wright brought it up, we don't hear about good things. We only hear about bad things. So, everybody gets painted with that brush. And these things that, programs that everybody comes in with is just fantastic. This is a fantastic program. And the fact that you took your own time during the summer and after school to meet and discuss and plan this, this is, I've sitting like, and plan this, this is, I've sitting like everybody else in school, wow, you know, this is really great. And I have to give Mrs. Blevins a little credit and Mr. Wright for allowing you to try this. They, they, all right, it's in your court, go with it. And it sounds like it's really a great program. Thank you so much.
I think one of the things that we always do is we're always challenging our teachers and administrators. If we're not happy with how things are going, what can we do differently? And that's something that continues to resonate. And education is fairly traditional. And none of you even know this story. I don't even think I told you, Jen. The third day that you were doing this, a parent of one of your kindergarten students came up to central office. He was on crutches and had, just had knee surgery and was coming in and had huge concerns about what you were doing. And so I invited him into my office, and I sat him down, and I talked to him for a few minutes. And he said, you know, what was good enough for me is good enough for my child. What are you doing? And so I thought for a second, and I asked him, I said, let me ask you a question. Do you want to have a surgeon do the knee surgery that you just had on your knee the way they did it in 1985? Or the way they did it last week? And he said, well, I'd like to do it the way they did it last week. And I said, well, why is that? And he said, well, they've gotten better at it over time. I said, that's what our teachers are doing. I said, what happened in 1985 is much different than what happened today. And our goal ultimately is placing the child in the best learning environment that they can, that they can have. And that's what our teachers are doing. And yes, it is a little different from past practice. But, you know, we know, once again, that in the long term, that's a great learning environment for those kids. Matching kids up according to the skills of our teachers. Everybody brings a skill set, and everybody's skill set's slightly different. And being able to make those matches, I think, are critically important. And so I appreciate the creativity. I know it's something that we piloted this year at Fairwood, and with the successes that you've had, we are gonna be looking at doing that in some other locations starting next year. But you guys are the trailblazers with this, at least within our district. And I thank you for your creativity in doing that. And most importantly, it's going to better service our students. And that's what we're always looking towards, is that how can we do things differently? This didn't cost us money. This didn't really cost us resources. But thinking creatively, there are a lot of things that we can do that aren't resource-based. It's, it's just looking at things in a different lens and doing some things a little differently. The last thing that I want to say is I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Karen for her Educator of the Year Award that she received through the Harry T. Wilkes Foundation. So Karen, congratulations on that. Thank you.
Mr. Holbrook, as they finish up tonight, I wanna, I just, I get excited over here because you've been able to see two representations tonight from just a small sampling of what happens in our district every day. And what I truly believe is we hire great people, and we get out of the way, and we listen to what they say. If you look at the heart of these adults, they lit up when they talked about what they did. They built this from the ground up, and it's bettering the school experience for kids. If you don't think that our kindergartners are coming in and feeling a sense of community isn't going to pay off four years down the line, eight years down the line, so I just want to thank you, you know, I've been like a proud mama bird tonight with two different representations of what our schools are doing. Amazing things are happening. And so I want to thank this team. And we've got a lot of experience on this team of teachers there, and you're doing amazing things. So thank you to your leaders. Thank you to you as teachers and to Mr. Marjum and all of our community partners. We couldn't do this without you. And so we are blessed to do this work because of you. So thank you.
Now on to the rest of the meeting. That was great. That was great. I don't have any names for public participation, so Mr. Holbrook.
Yes, President Sprague. Tonight I want to take your attention to the board agenda. We do have one grant on the board agenda tonight from Four Imprint Corporation Giving Team for $500. This is to be used for PVIS incentive items at Linden Elementary. One of the things that I continue to bring to you is experiences outside the classroom are critically important to me, and I think they're critically important to our students' education. And tonight, we have a number of field trips recommended for approval, including our Winter Guard competing in Hilliard, Ohio on Sunday, March 19th. Our swim team's going to, to, competing at the East Central Relay Invite in St. Leon, Indiana, and also competing at the Harrison Dual Swim Meet. Our show choir traveling to Virginia to compete in a, you know, regional event in late February. I think those show the commitment this district has to giving students experiences, not just in the classroom, but outside. And so all of those are for your recommendation tonight, and that is all I have for you this evening.
Okay, thank you. I do want to go in, talking about experiences, the Hamilton Marching Band scored a superior rating at State this year, so that's great. So kudos to the marching band students and to Mr. Dixon and his staff doing it. We have a first reading of our district calendar. Do you want to say anything about that, or just go on?
We have the district calendars for 23, 24, and 24, 25. This is a first read tonight. No action needs to be taken by the board, and we will be bringing these back to you at the December board meeting for final approval.
Thank you. Board members, you have in front of you the consent agenda for this evening. I'd like a motion to, to accept the consent agenda. Second? Any discussion on any items? Mr. Frazier.
Mr. Isgro?
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
And Mr. Frazier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Scoot that way out there. We have. Can you hear me? I must've had the bad egg. Okay, thank you, Mr. President. We have several items up for your approval tonight. We have a confirming purchase order for a scholastic purchase for the Crawford Woods Book Fair. We have a donation, an anonymous donation of $310 to the Highland Principals Fund. We have up for recommendation, a donation to the Community Health Alliance for some used athletic equipment. That would be five ellipticals, a treadmill, and a cable machine. We have the treasures reports, which includes the cash position report. It does not include the cash flow analysis tonight because we will be getting into the forecast this evening, and that's what we will be looking at next. So when we start talking about the forecast, what, what exactly is the forecast? The forecast is a projection, right? With, it's an educated guess, bringing every piece of information that we have to bear on the numbers that sit in front of us. So it's a projection of revenues. It's a projection of future expenses and the corresponding cash balance that comes along with those. So if we, we look at the report, what we are looking at there at the top of the screen, this is just a graphical representation of the numbers that are in the forecast. So we can see black columns, we can see gray columns, and we can see a yellow line. The black columns represent estimated revenues moving forward. So if we move throughout that graph as we go right through the years, we can see those, those black columns are relatively flat. Okay? So what does that mean? That means we are projecting relatively flat revenues through the forecast period. So we might say, why is that? Well, we get, here in Hamilton, 75 to 80% of our revenues from the state. Okay? So that is, every two years, we get a biennial budget. Right now, we're in year two of the biennial budget, and we do not know what we're gonna get next year, or the year after, or the year after that, or the year after that. So when you look around the state and you see higher cash balances with these school districts around the state, you might wonder, hey, are they gonna be giving us a lot of extra money if they see that sitting out there? Truth be told, we don't know. We don't know. So we are projecting that to be flat. I don't think we're gonna get any less money from the state, but we are not certain if we're gonna get more or how much more we are gonna get. So let's move on to the gray columns. The gray columns represent expenses. Everybody knows expenses are going up. So within the forecast, we have projected normal increases for things like purchase service, material supplies, capital projects, and even our other objects that we spend money on. You will also notice with those gray columns, if you look at 2025, you'll notice there's a, a sharp increase and a pretty decent variance between the gray columns and the black column there. What is that? That is what a lot of analysts around the state are terming as the Esser Cliff. Sounds terrible, right? The Esser Cliff, Esser is the COVID money that we got through the pandemic. Okay? So school districts around the state got a whole bunch of Esser dollars, which, you know, we've spent in various ways. What happens to those dollars as the grant runs out? Those dollars fold back into the general fund. Okay? So that's what we're looking at in that 2025, is those dollars folding back into the general fund. And you can see what happens. That's where our yellow line, our cash line, starts a descent, and it's a pretty sharp descent. We are actually projecting increasing our cash balance this year. But as those things start to come back, as those Esser dollars run out, that's where, you know, we've got some things that, that we need to do to right it. So, so that's, that's kind of the things we're looking at. We're, we're dealing with, you know, relatively flat and, flat revenue coming in in the next few years. Everybody knows about inflation, and we're, we're dealing with this Esser Cliff, as well as all school districts. I mean, this is not, this is not a unique situation to the Hamilton City Schools by any means. This is something that's going on throughout the state. So let's move on a little bit more to revenues. So as we look at revenues, you can see state funding. And as we talked about, that's 75 to 80% of our revenues. We get a little under 20% of our revenues from property taxes, and then we get small amounts for other revenues, which is various reimbursements and interest that we get. And then we also get property tax allocation, which is basically a reimbursement from the state for local property tax credits. And that's really the, our revenue stream there. You'll see on the left column there, a, a black line at the top. Those are advances in. So we'll, we'll have a couple line items, advances in and advances out. That would be the corresponding expense. And that would be advancing money to grant funds from, at the end of the year. We will no longer be doing that, which is why you don't see that in the 2027 column. We've got a, a new process by which we don't have to do those anymore. We, we've got a new mechanism to, to account for those things and all of that. So, so that's a difference there, which is why if, if you look at the, the columns to the right, you'll see a, it looks like a slight dip as we move out through the years. Really, that, all that is, is taking out the advances in. And the expenses, we'll have, see a corresponding dip from advances out, which would be an expenditure to the general fund. So that's, that's where we are with, with revenues. If we look at expenses, the expenses column chart looks a little bit different than the revenues. You can see when those Esser dollars start to hit the general fund, start to fold back in, what that looks like. So anytime you got flat revenues and ever-increasing expenditures, we, we know what that means. That means we are spending more money than we are bringing in, which is obviously not a, not a good thing. So if you look at the, the two column charts to the left, you can see where we are, where we spend our money. Salary and benefits. School is, it's a people business, and we are pretty much right in line with industry standard. I mean, we're 78 to 82%, depending on the year you look at, of our general fund spend is salary and benefits. The 82 is getting a little high as you, as you move forward through the years, but we're not too far, too far out right now. So, and again, you can see that it's a, it's a peach line in the left-hand column there, other uses that you do not see in the 2027 column. That is the advances out that we talked about previously, that we've got a mechanism to, to account for that. But basically, we've got, you know, normal increases in purchase service, material and supply, capital expenditures, and other. And what we're really fighting and looking at is that Esser Cliff in 2025, when all of those grant dollars start rolling back into the general fund. So that's, that's really what we're, what we're looking at. With that, I'd like to take any questions that, that we may have about the forecast or any other items up for recommendation.
Mr. Frazier, I just want to thank you for, for putting this together. It's a sombering, after what we've heard tonight, it's a sombering.
Sure.
Situation for all of us. It doesn't help to know that those misery and company with other districts around the state are facing the exact same thing. We have been flat-funded as, as a community. We don't feel it's appropriate to, to go for a levy, and we only receive 20% of our budget from our revenue from the city, or from our, our citizens. So we're very dependent upon what happens at the state.
Absolutely.
And I don't think everybody realizes that in the, in our community, how very dependent we are upon them. And when we're flat-funded, it's detrimental to our, our district when we, we see that happen. It's been nice having the Esser dollars, and we've been able to do some really cool things with it. But when those funds dry up, we have to have some way to, to account for that money not being there anymore. And I know that's with districts across the, the state. I hate to say, our only hope is that Lumbus recognizes that and sees how important this is for our, for our community and for communities around Ohio. So I appreciate that very much.
I guess I would just comment to Mr. Sprague. It is somewhat, we had all the excitement earlier, and then you come back to reality. But that, that we have to remember that we are, we are stewards of our taxpayer dollars and that, you know, I'm sure that we will discuss this and how we can get, get to the right decision. But I really appreciate how you've kind of changed that so we're not seeing those ins and outs. I think that's a lot clearer for us. And I don't think it's, I mean, this isn't like a total disaster, but we are like a total disaster, but we are just recognizing early in the game, and that's a good thing to do, and that's what we should be doing. So thank you for putting this together and, and doing that for us.
I'd like to have a motion to accept the treasures report.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Frazier?
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Isgru?
Yes.
Again, I want to thank everybody that participated tonight, and the, I know we're on a down, sort of a down note, I hate to do that, but it was so exciting, Mr. Holbrook, seeing these, all these community members in here tonight, and no one complained, which was kind of nice. But seeing them supporting our schools, and I know that this has multiplied over and over again in all our buildings, it, that is just incredible, the support that our students and our schools and our teachers receive in this district. And that's what makes Hamilton a great place to be in because of that support. And I want, I mean, I, as a board, as representative of the board, we support all those things too. We, we're not here to grind axes or, or concerns. We are here to support our kids, and, and that's the important part. And we're all in this together. I'm looking around the room and seeing all these administrators, we're all in this together in what we can do for our kids. And I thank everybody that's, that it's part of tonight for all their hard work. So, that being said, if there's no other business in front of the board, I'd like to have a, our next meeting will be on Thursday, December 8th, beginning at 4:00. I will be going into executive session and being in open session at 6:00. May I have a motion for?
No, I got it done.
Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Second.
We are adjourned, thank you.